Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
Several items this afternoon for discussion. We were hoping that most of the council and maybe our attorney could make it, but so far we've got three of the council people here and some of our folks that are gonna kinda give y'all some updates on some matters that we're gonna discuss today. I've asked Tim Kerr to be first today on our agenda. He's got something that has come up as a new law for park and recreation departments and it's a very important matter and it's come to the front much quicker than I thought it would. Tim and I traveled to Haylerville and I'll let him tell you, we listened to the, I guess, the instigators of this plan over there and early on we heard the concepts, but we really didn't understand exactly how quickly this would be implemented from the first day we heard it, but I'm gonna let Tim talk to you now about this new rule that's been passed for cities like us and it's for all cities, I believe, in the state of Alabama.
It is. In April last year, the legislature passed HB nine, which is brought about by the Coach Safely Foundation, which is, you can look it on the paper, the other people that started it. Basically what it is, is anybody that coaches fourteen hundred sport of any kind in the state of Alabama, if you're associated in any way with the municipality or anything that's owned by the state or government, schools, municipality, anything like, anything on our property, if you coach a kid fourteen hundred, you have to go through this training. And before all they, all they required was a concussion. Now there's seven different things, which is on page two, that you have to, you have to go through. There's three different ways you can do it. You can go online and do the test, or you can individually, or the parking rec will have a number of it. Our coaches can go online under our number and take the test. That way they'll be in our database. The third way is a blended way where you actually have an instructor. Coach Safely's founded, they partnered with Encore and so Encore will be helping do some of that. So that's the third way, which is probably the way that we can do it.
Who's the sports doctor that had a big hand in this?
Doctor Andrews?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's renowned for working athletic injuries and this kind of thing.
Right. And it's a real good law that they passed because, you know, most places, other than the concussion, there's no any kind of kind of.
If we allow coaches to coach our park and rec center players, department players, and they're not certified, what's the ramifications to the city?
Well, it's a law. So I mean, if you had an injury, you'd be liable.
Yeah, we'd be liable for injuries.
Because it is a law, man.
So the certifications have to be brought to the, to you or to someone at the city level before the coaches are allowed to work with their kids?
Before, starting in January the first, before anybody can coach with their kids, they have to take this course.
And pass it.
And pass it, yeah. And it takes about two hours to do the course. They have some of the videos already online, which, you know, they're little good videos. It covers a wide range of stuff.
So if somebody says, "I've took that course and you don't have their certification,"
Well, there'll be a registry.
Okay.
A registry. Any parent can look online and see who is taking this course and who doesn't.
I wondered how we would know for sure.
There'll be a registry where you can, you should, when they get it up and running, they'll be able to look under the Hamilton Park Recreation Department, see who our coaches are that have registered and took the course.
What about, you're saying if they use our fields, that's?
Anybody that uses our fields.
Yeah, so even like, they travel along.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've already talked to some of them, so they're aware of that too. The only people that will be exempt will be like the high school coaches, because they have to do that anyway. And anybody that's a first responder or had, you know, advanced medical training doctors, first responders, parents, like Groenbaum was, you know, trained or stuff like that, they'll be exempt. Anybody else that have to take it.
So another example would be this upward bound?
Upward, see churches are exempt.
Okay.
But because they use our facilities, they'll have to do it.
Okay, well that's what, yeah.
The first thing they want us to do is to pass a resolution supporting it and partnering with, with the Coach Safely Foundation. And that's what we have here, so that's the first thing we need to do. We have, I have registered with the, with the foundation, so we're getting that role. And the next thing we'll do, which I'm working on, is getting a list of coaches that we need to do it and then we'll start worrying about how we're going to implement the test and everything.
What first move is for our council?
The resolution, yeah.
To proclaim, yeah. Reclaim it, okay. We'll need to put that on the agenda.
Do we have an example resolution?
Yeah, it's got the draft right here for our city.
This is, they did a pilot program with Trustpoint. They did this in 2015, so this has been in the works for a while. They kinda sprung it on all of us here since like August, didn't they?
Coach, I mean, the mayor sincerely had contacted us that he was having a clinic at his city hall. Tim and I drove over for it and listened to the presenters and we saw quickly that it was a for real thing. It's gonna, it's up and coming and we might as well get ready for it. Nobody's telling me to be exempt if they have a park and rec board. And the towns that don't have a park and rec board are gonna have, it's gonna be problematic for those towns.
It is because, I mean, basically, we're gonna have to make sure that they, anybody that comes and plays on our fields does.
See, there was, there was some people said, "We don't have a park and rec board at that meeting in Haylerville." Some of the local towns don't have this. And not having them is gonna be very problematic for them. They'd be proud that we're.
That's another thing too, these softball tournaments and stuff, does that be, well, no, most of those are older. No, no, some of the girls, the boys, girls softball.
The thinking on that was they're gonna make, like, each individual sanctioning body, like you triple S.A., A.S.A., whatever, they'll have to make their coaches do that before they're able to rent the field. Because, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a big problem. Yeah.
I'm sure this will affect our liability insurance too, like, our liability insurance, so when you get people certified, I'll have to have a list of that to show them that we are making people get certified.
Right.
Tim, I appreciate you following up on this with the, the key is for us to agree to participate by a resolution and then the follow-ups will be at sanctioned events, those certifications will be noted, right?
Right.
And you'll see that people working for our city.
We will comply by, you know. The big thing is gonna be how they, how they implement people that are traveling from out of town or out of state. How we govern that.
Can you see a weekend not happening because of non-compliance?
I think, I think there'll be a lot of, it'll be a stupid, kinda rocky for a while, but I think eventually everybody will, will start complying and smooth that. Yeah, I could see it being some real problems.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
That's all I got.
I asked Mike to stick around. The next thing we'll talk about is our street closings that are being proposed. And of course, right now, those are only requests that we're having public hearings for, and that's to be next Monday night, the fifteenth, at the police department auditorium. We'll be having our next meeting there, because we might have a lot of people show up and we couldn't see them here, possibly. I don't know how much activity this is gonna create. It could create a good bit. We'd be talking about probably hearing the hearings next and not actually bringing this to a vote at this meeting. Most likely, we will not vote, especially if there's discussion. Tammy specifically asked me to wait till November nineteenth, that's about a month from the meeting date, to have a vote. Scott Hunt has requested twice a ruling from the legal municipalities about conflicts of interest, and he doesn't have the answer to that either, so he recommended we at least postpone the vote for one meeting. And so we probably will only have the public hearings on this matter the fifteenth and then a later date vote before.
What, what are they talking about conflict of interest?
Well, you members of the Baptist church probably can vote.
Oh, oh, you're talking about all the, yeah, I thought you were talking about something, I didn't.
No.
Yeah, 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 I understand that.
He's getting a ruling on that.
I thought I knew you were speaking about the church.
Anyway, that would be the only thing that would be, like, possibly prohibit the vote. I don't know that it will. He doesn't either, but he has got a ruling. And he said if he cannot get a ruling from the legal municipalities on this, he'll write the ruling on his own law studies. And so we'll, we'll have a ruling on that. So because that, we probably won't vote Monday night. We might act on the one that's on private property, if there's absolutely no one contesting that. Thirdly, you got any ideas, Mike, on the, on the, do you know how many cars are traveling those streets on a daily or weekly basis and being out and about? How much street use do you see on the one, let's just say?
I really don't see that much on the, on the one that's by Methodist Church. I know the, now that the, well, it's basically the one that's used, like the one at the Baptist church, we block it off when there's gonna be, you know, kids crossing the streets for their festivals and those kind of things, and the Methodist Church is the same way. Just to actually question, no, I don't have any data on how much is going down each one of those streets. My understanding is that.
There's a count being done.
Yeah.
For this fifteenth meeting. The county's agreed to do that count for us.
I know, I think Karen Wheaton has purchased the shopping center, am I right in saying that? But, so they're using that playground now over there, and they cross from the little building down there in the parking lot over to that playground. And it's mainly just foot traffic there, but other than on Sundays, I really don't see a lot of traffic down there. There's probably more at the, at the Baptist church and kind of stages without actually having proof of that. I think there'd probably be more there, school traffic and all such as that down there.
Does that, does that section of street dead end past city hall that comes?
The third avenue or third street or whatever stops there at the, at the old city hall. And you go left or right, and then you make the block and it picks back up. As far as the street number, if you know where Miss, where the bird's nest, if y'all know where the bird's nest daycare thing is, that's also the same street. You just have to make the block to go, to pick it back up.
Okay.
So.
I was trying to determine if that was a dead end street, but it turns right or left.
Well, you have, if you turn right or turn left, you're actually on a street. And you make the block and you pick the avenue back up going east and west.
Okay.
So it's, it's not a continuous, it's, it dead ends there and it picks back up a block away.
Okay.
If y'all understand what I'm trying to say.
I was just trying to get in my mind how usable it is anyway, you know? If it's viable, useful street, if it goes to a dead end, it usually just only accommodates what's at the end of the street.
Yeah, and I'm not real sure exactly how, are they talking about from forty-three all the way through to the, to the backside of the, of the city police station now? Are they talking about two blocks? Are they just talking about one block or?
One little section of the street that starts at the, just across from Johnny McLawler's building, old building.
Okay.
Right there.
The whole block of the Western Auto?
Yeah, yeah. The Western Auto block's down in the little section that's considered there.
Yeah, well.
Not all the way past the.
These both streets are coming up, yeah.
Yeah, you're rolling into it with two dead ends. It's about what you're going.
Yeah, just taking that street out.
Two areas would stop that section.
You got a street coming up inside of it.
That's right.
But I, I got a question too there. What, what is that gonna, the other part we're talking about over there? I haven't really understood. What's that gonna have to do with the Methodist church? Is that gonna not have something to do with their parking and everything in there?
Well, the Methodist church has a parking lot and a playground that's, that they own, that's on the next block. They're asking to just take care of the street, that section of street, from forty-three to the end of their property there. And it would leave the street east of their property that goes into the little seafood restaurant and that section of buildings, it will leave that open.
Well, it is gonna, it is gonna affect that parking lot, you know, there, just north of the, and how they're gonna accommodate people coming in there to park.
You know about the Methodist church, yeah.
Yes. I don't know, we're talking about Sunday church.
You know, I'd like for them to be satisfied, you know, are they, are they giving, telling us what they will be satisfied with?
They're gonna have people there to talk at the meeting, the fifteenth, and explain their reasoning, that kind of thing.
I would, I, I miss with two churches and they, they don't have anybody on this.
The pastor and Sandy Sandlin and I believe Martin Jeremy Streepman are the three that signed their letter. And I believe they are each represent a segment of the church official board and that kind of.
I would really like to try to every preaching, to satisfy them too, you know, nothing to, I wouldn't wanna, I sure wouldn't wanna. Well, you know what?
Well, they're doing it for, more or less for safety reasons and.
So if they're happy with it, I'd certainly be happy with it.
Of course, we'll, we'll hear from those who may be opposed to any street closing and their reasoning too. We'll listen to the churches that are requesting this and then we'll listen to the people who oppose it and then we'll have to vote based on the findings. Okay, this is coming up. It's just something that we've got to address. Andrea, do you have a copy to talk from, or do you wanna borrow my copy of this sidewalk and seventeen project that we're talking about?
I have a copy. Thanks, Angel. All right, um, we.
We had questions concerning this and didn't vote on it or even bring it to vote, but we decided to re-discuss it. This would be the Highway Seventeen Project, which includes the crossover and the sidewalks. She has visible drawings for this today and she can discuss the matters of the cost of the project and how the project was planned and how it would affect the city. This is the, including the easement from the co-op through their property to allow us to move from seventeen to the rec center on a sidewalk, but we'll have a permanent easement.
Two of them. Two of them, one of them bigger. We initially applied for the sidewalk to go around a Smokey Bear, and they were hoping that we could find a route to go directly and avoid going around Smokey Bear. And that's what this is, a solution. After the mayor spoke with the regional coordinator for the co-op and the local person as well, they're willing to consider an easement five or six feet wide, allowing a sidewalk from seventeen with eighty-eight crossings on seventeen and markings and signage and everything, straight through to the rec center property. And the grant or the tap program allows money to provide a new fence for this sidewalk, the sidewalk itself, and the budget you see there shows what all that covers, the lighting, the C E N I is the construction engineering, and any testing that might be done during construction. This would be bid just like any other project. The general contractor would install it. The lead on the project would be Gonzales Strength and Associates. They're a civil engineering company that are working closely with Aldine on new projects, so they've offered to come up and answer any questions also about.
I mean, I couldn't, I didn't get that. How far is it from that highway down to the rec center? How long is that sidewalk gonna be? It's five foot wide, I saw that.
Let's see, uh, let me see if I've got that dimension here. I have it on another drawing. I can get that for you if I don't have it right here. Let's see, it looks like it's three hundred twenty feet, maybe, linear feet?
Three hundred twenty feet, five foot wide, three hundred something thousand dollars.
If that's what.
I can't, I can't, I, I can't imagine that.
For what?
Three hundred thousand dollars.
No, sir, the budget's been revised. With the shorter sidewalk, the budget was revised also. The city's letter that the mayor received, did you see that?
I thought I saw it on this, that it was three hundred thousand dollars.
This is the old numbers we got on here.
Yeah, that's the old number. This is the new numbers. The city's portion would be forty-four thousand and, that's the front letter.
Yeah, the total cost, two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
For a five-foot sidewalk for three hundred something feet? That's the fencing and?
That's the.
What kind of gold fencing?
The grading and.
Is it gold?
It's lighting too, isn't it?
It, it includes lighting. It would be a pedestrian sidewalk.
Is it?
That would stay open.
Is it all, I mean, you have to use the whole, everything that's in the grant, you have to, you have to do everything that's in the grant? Or can you just?
Those numbers are not correct.
Pick what you want out of the grant.
We can, we can.
You didn't want lighting or you didn't want fencing?
Right.
We're gonna be out six thousand dollars, you might say, but now, the other thing, every time we've got into this and we say it's gonna, we're gonna be out the city fund forty-four thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars, but when we come down to it then, well, we didn't have your in there, we didn't have this in there, that wasn't included. Where's that, we got fifty or sixty more thousand dollars to pay. That's what happened on the last one.
Well, I've done some discussions with the engineer and also considering that there'll be a permanent easement that has to be written, that has to be paid by the city to the city attorney, so.
And that'll come extra?
That's extra. Only two things extra would be the initial design fees for the civil engineer and that'll be twenty to thirty thousand, probably.
More than this?
That, but that's an estimate. That could be less. Like Mike said, if you don't do everything.
I just can't believe building a five, and man, and Herb's been in it, a five-foot sidewalk, I don't care if it's lit or whatever, gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars before you get through. Three hundred thousand dollars for a sidewalk.
Did you stick the line out in budget?
I don't, that, that's a bunch of bull. I've been there, you know. I, 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 I hate to go away. City taxpayers' money for something that we really don't have to have right now. And every time we turn around now, we're spending, this council and I is going into the same mode that we had before of spending money on things right now that we don't need to spend because we don't know, we've got to pay for all this stuff that was coming up before we got here, that we still hadn't paid for, you know? And spending a, well, it's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars before you get through for a sidewalk.
They'll pay the, what is it, one hundred seventy-eight thousand for that? That's the, what they all, the tap program or the grant portion of it.
Yeah, but then we paying forty-five thousand, you might say, here, then we're gonna have probably another forty-five thousand before we get through.
I don't think it will be that much, but.
I don't like this, I don't think, because when we do this and pay this out for something we don't have to have right now. I'm a hundred percent for having that, don't get me wrong. I'm a hundred percent, if we had the money and had the tax money coming in to throw away, you know? I'd be a hundred percent for it. But I cannot say that I'm gonna be for spending this kind of money for something that we really, right now, don't have to have. Now, maybe when we get through with all the other things that we've got coming up, as you know, which is two or three million dollars, things that we're gonna have to spend down the road that we knew before. I don't wanna get the city into trouble like we took over. And this, things like this right here that we don't have to have will put us in trouble. I mean, when you start spending that kind of money, even these forty and fifty thousands at a time, it's kinda.
What we're trying to bring it down to, Zane, is this. We have, we have got to turn down, we've been awarded this grant. We've got to either proclaim that we will put our portion up or turn the thing down and send it back. And that's what we gotta do is vote. Our sentiments as to whether or not we wanna commit the city to the, to the part that it's gotta pay. And, you know, that's why we bring these things to the council for a vote and, and try to answer, Andrea's here today to try to answer the questions, and she's gonna reach out. And she's gonna reach out to Tammy, because Tammy sent me a fax, uh, or an email with her concerns and she's gonna answer her questions also. But what we're gonna do, we're gonna vote and say, yes, we want to accept this money from the government or we want to not accept it and not, uh, you know, commit our city funds to the project. If we don't commit our part, then we don't have a resolution to go forward with the project and we'll have to, uh, s- send the grant back for this town.
But what it amounts to is a hundred thousand dollars.
I, I can't tell you that.
I can't tell you when it gets down to it, it will, we've already been through a lot of this stuff before, everybody pulling out.
I, I would certainly say that there'll be some additional costs.
Yeah.
But I don't know exactly how much that'll be.
That's what's wrong, I, I, that's where I got burnt last time on one of these things we did. And then in the end, it come in with thousands and thousands more dollars, I don't know.
Well, I, I understand that it's not something, we have to do, the thing we did two years ago was, was to get our state people over here and we did a, a pretty good amount of looking at what was going on, the, the kids, uh, crossing the road wherever they choose to, putting themselves in danger and, and the danger factor is, is why we asked for the grant. Uh, whether or not we decide to go through with it, it will be up to the council. And, and that's why we wanna get it to a vote, to say we do or we don't wanna do it. Then I can turn this money back in, this hundred seventy-eight thousand, they can award it to someone else this year, uh, for a project, maybe they're waiting on it. Because people kinda are in competition for these grants and we've been given this money, um, as an award. But we could, if we turn it back in now, that maybe it could help somebody else with the project.
Well, see what happens here, puts pressure on the city council, bringing this stuff up to us. Saying, well, we, we need to do it because those kids been crossing that road for the last fifty years, nobody's been run over. Somebody might get run over next week. And then if we don't do it and somebody gets run over, people come back and say, well, if you'd have spent that extra nearly a hundred thousand dollars of that grant, this wouldn't have happened, it's your fault. See, it's going back, putting pressure on us, saying it'd be our fault then if somebody gets run over now, which it's happened there for fifty years and ain't nothing happened. But it could happen today or tomorrow or whatever. I don't like to have things like that thrown at us right now with us trying to take care of the city's business and save what money we can right now. If we had that extra money laying out there, I'd say, yes, sirree, if we had the tax money laying in the bank to pay for it.
Yeah.
But coming up with this stuff right now, you know, and, and it, it's gonna be all our fault now if, if somebody gets run over there. Of course, they could get run over there even if they had it there, people don't understand that. Maybe we put it in there in the first month, you have the lights and everything there, a kid run across there and get run over too. But that'd be alright, because we done our part. And, and that's what I, it, it worries me, I tell you, too, about not doing it. And then again, I don't feel like we're handling some of the city money right, right now, for the shape we're in. We've got some millions of dollars that's fixing to get us and I, I don't wanna come up about any money and spending it where we shouldn't, you know. And maybe, or maybe we should, I don't know. Well, I'm, I don't have one vote, everybody else broke away with one too.
I'd, I'd kinda hate to vote on it, not knowing how it's gonna cost.
Well, I did talk with several of the people involved over this past week and those were the two items that came up that they said would be totally separate from the TAP program. And that was speaking with the Aldi person and with the, uh, engineer. So, I did pose that question, I said, they'll want to know exactly what isn't included. And so those were the two items, the, uh, whatever would be required to get the permanent easement and, um, whatever, um, would be required to get the drawings put out to bid.
And that's gonna be a lot. And would you, uh?
What do you think is the biggest cost of it?
Of what, the?
The project itself.
Just, well, you can look at the list as well, um, just the materials and the mobilization and the, you know, supervision.
Well, concrete's like a hundred and twenty dollars a yard.
So, I mean, it's.
For five foot wide and three hundred something feet, it'd be easy for somebody that had more sense than I got to pick within five minutes.
I think it'll be that list of items and you can look it over. You got your crushed on and different.
I don't think that you would guarantee what it would, more than's gonna be added to this, it'll cost us. Because now, we've already, this, we, I forgot what it was and I can't think, but we've already got stuck once with thousands of dollars more than what we were told it was gonna cost, because I think maybe your fees wasn't in it and a lot of other things wasn't in it. It added up to a lot of money and we approved it thinking it's gonna be, and, uh, I, I, I'm, I, I'm, I'm.
Well, knowing Mr. Sanderson how he felt about that, that's why I went back to him and I said, I need to absolutely know if there's gonna be something down the road that is typical with a TAP, uh, program, then I, I need to present that to the council and that's what I, I did ask them, so, um.
But like I say, the other thing, I'd, I'd like to see it there, but again, I don't think we got the money right now to do it and, and, uh, the other thing is if you don't do it then, and somebody gets run over, well, there gonna be somebody out here saying, well, we tried to get it and Gene Johnson put up there and he was against it, it's his fault that kid got killed. So, puts you in a bad spot.
We're, we're not, uh, we're not expecting any child to get killed, accidents happen. Uh, nobody, I don't think, would, would wanna, uh, absolutely say somebody's fault for an accident, but, uh.
Well, maybe it wouldn't be though, if you didn't go ahead and do then.
But like I said, we, we, uh, known for two years that we had applied for this grant and, and, uh, we've got it now, but we're gonna decide if we wanna commit our money to the, to the match and, and actually that doesn't have to happen, it can be sent back and, you know, it, it'll be used somewhere. Somebody's gonna be awarded this money, uh, either we'll use it or some other city will use it. And, uh, this is just a project we've looked at, it's not a project we have to do. Uh, the, uh, the crossings there now, it's not a real handy crossing and it's not being properly used, that's, that's the whole key. But nothing fits, nothing lines up now with that crossing and the path they use to get the rec center. They crawl through fences and everything else to go over there now. This would, would promote better travel and I think it would be used if we build it. But it's not something, as you say, that we've just got to have.
Well, I'd say that we could put up a light there, a caution light with a sidewalk, with a walkway marked to cross there with slow signs, students crossing the street, coming each way, for probably twenty-five thousand dollars or something. And they could get across the street and then they could go on down there the way they wanted to, like they've been to it. If that, to protect us right now, instead of, you know, and, and, it, it's just, just, just uh, too much riff off to me on that.
Well, I understand your feelings and I, you know, I wouldn't at all try to change the way you see things.
But I'd say we could do that, I'd, I'd be for putting a light up there and, and, uh, two lights from both sides and put signs on each down there a hundred feet away and, and a crosswalk there. If that, you know, I just hate to, what scares me is if somebody did get hurt like.
I believe on seventeen it would be Aldi, they're responsible for their signage on seventeen, right?
Yes.
So, that's.
Yeah, the Department of Conservation, if, if there's changes vague where this highway is concerned, of course, they, they'll.
They would do it.
They'd have to pitch crosswalks.
They would do it and pay for it.
They should, I mean, I'm not answering for them, but.
Yeah, I think they would, I believe I heard that.
They might do something for us, uh, like that and then we wouldn't actually have the initiative to do a whole plan, which would be the, the walk that goes from point A to point B. It might be an alternative that the kids could use some other way to get, you know, on pass there. That would eliminate some of the danger out of it if we had a good crosswalk, well lit and well signed.
Oh, yeah, it would just not take it all that thin, because people coming down through there would know they're responsible.
Yeah. Well, I, I, it was just, this is just something for discussion today and, uh, we, we either need to, uh, vote to either commit our portion or not to do it, then I'll know to reply to state and tell them, uh, thank you, but we're gonna pass on this, uh, grant money for right now on this project.
Well, why don't you wait and let the other two be here, because I'm just, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna just stand and vote, because I'm the one that's.
Yeah, well, um, she's gonna.
Oh, you can't, that's right, you can't go today, no way.
She's gonna answer Tammy's questions, uh, for her and, uh, she's got enough information to do that. And, uh, and we'll talk to Kenneth, uh, before we bring it to a vote. Uh, we want to announce today that we are gonna have a bicentennial expo. Next year's the two-hundredth birthday of our state and, uh, thanks to Andrea and some friends she knows. Tell us about the exhibit that we'll be showing in August.
I'll pass this around. There's, um, you know, various exhibits touring Alabama and there's an exhibit of artists who paint onsite. They're called Plain Air Artists and their association got a grant to display thirty pieces of their artwork in the state of Alabama at different locations. And they have, um, said that our city hall would be acceptable for one of those locations and we would be on the route. It opened this week, that's what I'm passing around, at Aldridge Gardens in Hoover. And it will tour, um, to the state capitol, it will be in Fort Payne, it will be in Tuscaloosa and then it would come here and then Huntsville and then, I'm not sure, I think Mobile is on their, their route. But it's, um, thirty pieces of artwork that I think would be easily displayed in our lobby on the first floor in the historic area and then the public could be able to come and see it at any time during your business hours.
It's part of a celebration of the state and, uh, this is, so, helping celebrate the bicentennial. I think Winfield was awarded the traveling, uh, expo that, that is gonna travel the state, um, that the state sponsored, uh, but this is a group of artists that's doing this in honor of our state and we'll have an expo next August, uh, for this. I'd like to announce that we're gonna have a tree lighting, Christmas, uh, tree lighting ceremony on November the twenty-ninth at five-thirty to six-thirty, um, and that's what this group was doing today, the Chamber of Commerce and Archimedes was, uh, planning a Christmas tree lighting ceremony on our grounds outside the building here. The entire ceremony will be on the grounds, but not in the, in the building.
Did you send that date?
It's the twenty-ninth of November. Later today, uh, there'll be a, a doctor's, uh, reception, Dr. Schmuthers at the lobby of the hospital, uh, later this afternoon. And from four-thirty to six-thirty, a reception at the hospital for a new, uh, doctor that's incoming. So, some of you might wanna drop by and congratulate her and, uh, as being our newest doctor. Uh, some other matters we're gonna need to dis- discuss and decide on is whether or not we go to these LED lighting for our city. Uh, we had a proposal from Alabama Power for interchanging our lights. Uh, we'll put that on the agenda when you guys want to, or if you don't want it to come to the, to a vote, we'll leave it off the agenda. Just let me know whether or not, and, uh.
Steve, let me ask, did, did you have a, uh, how much difference was that cost gonna be? Do you remember?
I, I. That was eight hundred dollars a month, as I remember it, for the whole thing.
I think that was for option number one.
Yeah, and one of them was four hundred.
Option two was about four hundred dollars or so.
Four hundred dollars a month for option two and that's the one they recommended that we'd go with. And, uh, we could have entirely new lighting that would go throughout the city, every pole would have a new light on it. And, and I think we would be well pleased with it and our bill, if we use option two that they proposed.
The four hundred dollars, that's what you're gonna recommend?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's from Alabama Power. And way back, we had some folks come here that, uh, I believe Vonage is the people that came and they proposed us a new interconnecting telephone system at a thousand dollars a month savings to us over what we're paying, uh, now on our phones and they'd give us, uh, several lines more than we have now and they'll interconnect all of our departments where, uh, we, our switchboard could actually, uh, send a call from here to the street department or to the rec center, to the, uh, fire hall anywhere we need to transfer a call and would be connected. Forty-eight percent savings over what we're paying on our bill now and we haven't acted on that. I'd kinda like to bring that to a vote pretty soon and.
Well, we'd be crazy not to do that, wouldn't you?
It, it's just something that, we were gonna get Tom Big, the reason we put it off, we're gonna get Tom Bigby since they've gone out and got this cable, this fiber optics cable installed. We were gonna get a proposal from them, but we've waited and waited, they're just not interested in doing it, the telephone system for us. But this other company is at a large savings to us and, uh, I think we need to act on it.
I do too, yeah.
Forty-eight percent monthly savings. For more lines, more lines we got and we'll be interconnected to where we can transfer calls throughout the city.
We'll have six hundred dollar plus and pay for this other lighting here.
Yeah, actually, that we'll save enough on the phone bill, more than pay for our, our LED lighting changes.
Is it gonna be typical lines or V O I P? Is it gonna be typical like central, central link lines or is it gonna be V O I P, voice over internet protocol?
I wish you'd been here for that proposal.
Just curious, because.
I don't know.
Okay.
What's the difference?
Uh.
Are there a big difference in one cost?
Well, yeah, the, the physical lines are actual physical lines that come in the building, they get split off and everything like that. The V O I P is basically internet line coming in and then you have a service through a company that gives you voice over the internet like Tom Bigby does. They, they, you can bring one line in with the, the internet and then it can use it for phone lines and stuff. And it can stack stuff a lot more than just an actual physical phone line coming in, you know? Does that make sense? Not really.
Not to me. I didn't mean that the bad, I didn't mean that in no bad way, I think.
It just uses internet to, to make the phone lines instead of.
I do remember that, up to this twenty-eight individual lines.
It probably is.
That many.
It probably is V O I P. Which, there, there's nothing wrong with it, it actually is pretty good service.
I do remember the amount of, uh, individual lines, it's twenty-eight.
True, Vonage.
And we don't have nearly that many now.
I definitely think.
I'd like to put that on the agenda for a vote, uh, pretty quickly and I wouldn't mind having that come up Monday night. We tried to get, uh, a, a quote from our local people and Amy has worked and worked, worked on it and has, she had a meeting with them even and we still haven't offered us a quote. We've been waiting for three months for them to close.
And is the city switching their internet service over to them?
We are getting the internet service, yes.
We're, it's all.
We're still thinking that probably we wanna take advantage of their internet. Uh, let's see, uh. Uh, let's see, uh, Angela, do you have some items that needed to be brought forward today from? Did you have someone that needed to do an ethics report that you, have you kind of done that?
Uh, I have contacted everybody and Bobby Joe's got his. I gave him his, um. And I know of one other that's been done and that should lead me to just to.
Was there four that we needed?
Yes, there was four.
Okay.
Um, we will have probably something we need to vote on Monday night is uh, vote to to waive the business license requirements for the upcoming fall festival.
Is that something we've normally done?
Yes.
We don't mess with the taxes.
No.
Sales taxes and other matter.
Yeah.
It's about the business license for vendors.
Yes.
For a one-day event, okay. Two-day event.
A two-day, I believe.
Okay, alright. Well, that'll be coming forward to vote on Monday night also.
Why'd you turn this four-thirty to six-thirty last fall though?
That's a doctor's reception down at the lobby of the hospital, Dr. Schmuthers. If I'm not pronouncing that wrong, is that correct Scott?
Uh. It's today? Is it today?
Yeah, this afternoon.
Okay.
Starts.
When it started, just about.
Yeah.
I was down there when it started.
Our old fire chief has passed away.
Yeah.
Mr. Billy Lowden, y'all haven't heard about him?
Yeah, heard of him as well.
Yeah, he's our retired fire chief and our firemen are gonna honor him. Uh, they're they're doing something special for him, I understand. I was proud to hear that. If anybody ever put their heart and soul into their job, I mean, Billy was a fireman through and through.
He's same way to guard for forty years.
Yeah.
He's a good thing, he's a good.
Forty years, I think, yeah. Put a lot, lot of effort into whatever he did. That lived a good life. Uh, Mike, you got anything else? You're, no, tell us.
No, just an, just an update on our, uh, I talked to the people at Murphy Haven, uh, which should start on Smokey Bear Road next week, I'm expecting.
Okay.
So, we're fini- we'll finish up probably our last road to Car and Slag, could probably be next week now. We we was hoping to get it done today, but.
It'll be close.
It didn't, uh.
In total, how many, how many s- how many streets did y'all uh, work on this year?
Uh, we've probably got somewhere fourteen, I think, something like that.
We did eleven last summer.
Yeah. So, we got quite a few more this this year. Uh.
As much as you can going into the winter, keep hitting those potholes with the flat next.
We pothole just about every day. Uh, there may be, you know, if it's rained heavy and they're full of water.
Yeah.
We we usually don't put anything in there with them, but or not put it in those holes, but uh, most every day we, but they're just.
I understand.
Continue coming, you know, you fill it up here and next week they'll, they'll move down about six or eight inches and just keep growing, but uh.
We still get, we still get people wishing we'd do a little more and a little more, but let's do all we can to help our citizens on the street.
And that's, I think that's, oh, we got, we we ordered a hundred new garbage cans. That's one other thing I wanted to just mention to you, uh, garbage cans, we got, we just got a hundred new in, so we sold a hun- about a hundred somewhere last, last year, maybe a year and a half or something. I can't remember exactly when we ordered the last ones. Uh, but we got a hundred new ones in. Uh, we've got people already wanting those.
How much?
They're gonna be sixty-five. Yeah, that cost us a little bit more this year than it did last year, but we sell them at our cost and they'll, they'll be sixty-five.
Is that with the wheels on?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Those cheap good cans, ninety-five gallons. Uh. Walmart sells one a little bit smaller and it's actually a little bit more expensive than ours, the their best can, uh. But these days last a long time. Uh, they, uh. What I wanna think about doing is is each time, you know, we've talked in the past about trying to get people to buy cans or or not pick their garbage up without a certain kind of thing, but what I'd like to see us do at least to start with any new customers that wanna sign up on the garbage route. Not force them to buy one of ours, but at least comply with what, you know, a flipper can that'll work on our trucks. Uh, so I'd, I'd like to talk to Rodney about that and just get his, uh, get them to go along with us and tell them when they sign up for garbage, they're gonna have to have a certain kind of can. It'd be one step in the right direction. I still wanna push to get away from the bins and the loose cans or loose bags on the side of the road and that, that's, that's still. Garbage is a big issue for us 'cause it's, it's, there, it's a, it's a hard job. We don't get any credit for it and and it, we, we it's just a lot of work and people don't realize what goes into it and and uh, you know, we're, I hate to say it, but we're hundreds or thousands or millions of dollars in debt and we're, we're providing service to people that that we could actually at least get some of our money back. If you go to Winfield, they charge per can. We may pull up to a stop and there may be five or six cans right there and we're emptying all of those for the same price as one. If you go to Winfield, they're, they're paying seventeen or right at seventeen dollars, I think it is, for one can. The second can, seven dollars. The third can is another seven dollars. They charge them per can. And and I'm not advocating that we do that, but it's, uh, we're doing a lot, a lot more for people than than we could really get credit for.
I think it'd be a good idea for us to start thinking about charging for it.
Well, uh, you know, and and.
And I don't mind.
We try, I wanna be as good to people as we possibly can be. I mean, and I hate to be this way about it, but it's uh, right now, we've got people that we go to their house, they can't get their garbage to the road and we send an extra truck, truck out once a week to those people. We go up in their ha- or to, in their carport and get their garbage for them. If you go anywhere else, you're gonna get charged for that. We've got people now in in the projects that we go around behind their house and get their garbage and empty it and then take it back. All the, all that takes extra time and it's all we can do now to get to the dump before they close and get back.
Yeah. I'd hate to, those people that can't get out there, I, I, I wouldn't wanna, but.
That's right.
As far as the other.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be, I'd.
But at some point in time, Gene, that's gonna be to where we can't go behind everybody's house and get their garbage.
No.
You know, and that's what's happening. It's, it's.
It's kind of a one do for all scenario.
People know that we do it.
Yeah.
The next thing you know, last week I had three people to call about coming to get their. They saw us going to one house to get their garbage. Two people stopped the garbage truck and went, no, why we can't come behind their house and get their garbage if we can get that. That's what I'm up against and I, and I just, you know, somebody calls me and they've got a hardship.
They're ready to carry it out there.
Well, I do.
What'd they say?
They can't, they can't. You know, they'll, if you got any, can your neighbors not bring it out for you? Well, no, they won't do it. Or, I don't want him to, I'm scared of him. Some kind of something like that. And what do you say and what do you do? You know, you just go get it. You know, that's, that's what we do. And it's hard to tell them you can't.
Yeah.
You know?
Giving services is not an easy thing in the city and that there's a lot of requirements and uh, you know, we, we, we've got situations that are just pretty complicated. They seem simple.
You know, it's hard for me to tell a nice lady that can't get their garbage to the road that I can't come get it and I'm not going to.
I couldn't either.
But it's hard for me to know that somebody that can, that won't, just won't and wants you to do it for them.
Just because you're doing it for somebody that's not able.
That's right.
Yeah.
And it's a hard battle to fight, you know, so.
What if you did it like a sign up, like the the exemptions that you do, what if you did it like that?
Well, we, we tried to make them have an exemption, yes.
What I'm saying is like, like the exemption saying that they're.
They have a doc, yeah, they have a, we have, they get, they sign a, get a doctor to sign a form for them.
You'd, you'd be amazed how many doctors will sign it for them too, yes. Knowing they, nothing wrong with them.
We uh, we have, we have a lot of services we offer and do a good job of it, but he has to meet a deadline every day. If he don't get the garbage trucks to this uh, site, he, he can't get rid of that truck load. He's gotta haul it back to Hamilton and carry it the next day.
Where exactly is the dump located?
We get, there's a transfer station in Hable right now that we.
We gotta do a deadline. We gotta do that in a certain hour.
Hopefully in the, in the near future, we'll have another option that that could possibly save us some more money, so.
Commercial garbage is kind of a problem. People that got a house want us to take all the lumber and sheet rock and everything that comes out of the house, even though they've got a contractor making money off the job. They want us to haul the stuff away that's come out of their house on a, on a contracted job and and sometimes it's very difficult for us to get rid of the stuff that we have to bring to the dump.
Well, you can refuse it. I mean, they tell them, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one thing that you can.
It's amazing how people find a way to break our, break our rule and and we wind up with it anyway.
They catch you not looking.
That's what they do.
Can't stand down there with a guard over your garbage dump.
We got all kinds of problems, haven't we?
Small ones.
Big ones, they.
Hey, listen, if that's the worst problem I got, I ain't.
You need to handle it.
Yeah.
But, but we, we cope pretty well and all in all, we got a good, good operation, good people. We, we love our workers and, you know, heavens, they do a great job. We've had some broken water lines last few days. We've been digging up water lines at the Pocket Park and right in front of State Farm Insurance this week and uh, you know, there's ground shifting a little bit. The temperatures are changing and, and we'll have some more broken water lines. You know, we deal with that too. Uh, stores down here are looking real good. Y'all haven't looked.
Yeah, they, yeah, boy, they're coming up with that rest.
That's amazing how quickly they've got a roof on that thing and, and now there's a, a metal roof and brick veneer on the uh, new station. It looks so good. And they, they fixed the front today and it's gonna look just like, they're even checking with Andrea on the paint color to make sure to get the paint scheme right.
I got that call today.
So, uh, it's gonna be as beautiful a station as you'll ever imagine.
Hey, are, are we gonna try to do anything with that sewer pumping station in front of them out there? Or is it gonna stay there the way it is? I thought I saw somebody.
The gas company put a new roof on that building. They're trying to dress it up for us. They can't move it.
Okay.
But they're trying to dress it up so it kinda fits with the rest of the area.
Well, I saw somebody down there. That's, I guess, that's what I saw.
Yeah, they can't move it.
I wondered what they were.
They can't move it, but they are dressing it up. He, he agreed to do that. Uh, similar, I was gonna mention something else.
Oh, you might say something about the traffic lights.
They're in. The traffic, our new traffic lights, LED traffic lights are in and we've gotta get those installed and we'll have uh, new LED at our main intersections and I believe four, four intersections in total. Uh, new lighting and that's gonna look really good. I want those.
Yeah, and I'm gonna try to get them to check on these new loop, the loops that time the, not time the traffic, but when you drive up on it, it makes a lot change. I think some of ours are.
Demand type.
Yeah.
Can you check on the crosswalk over there we're talking about with the state and see if they'll do what we, we're talking about the sidewalks and the lights there without us having to spend.
Sure.
And before we do away with that, y'all might wanna vote on that again, how that, if we can't get it done that way.
Uh, the uh, the initial talk was that if you'll provide the, the rest of the route, we'll do our part. That's how we were presented this.
Yeah.
Wes Spiller said, if you guys will do your part of the project, we'll take care of the state's part and properly light it and properly mark it so it's safe, safer for these kids.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they're willing to do it if we don't fulfill our end, end of the thing. I just don't know. I can ask. That's.
You talking about going along with this, are they?
He said it would all fit together. There's, you know, they'll do their, they'll spend their money if if we'll do ours and, and that's, that was the way it's, it was first proposed to us, but.
Well, there's too much of this proposal. The vote's gonna be though, then when it comes down to paying, it's a different world. I never, I always paid what was on the bottom of that sheet when I started. That's the way I trained with anybody, you know?
We, we love to know what we're doing, you know, that, that's, that's important to us. Andrea did size it down as much as she could. The, the cost will be two costs and uh, but, you know, it's not shown in this proposal. This is an estimated.
Well, you don't know what it's gonna cost because you're gonna bid it out, right?
That, that is the estimate. That's the estimated portion.
So, in other words, even that figure could be more or less. And most of the time, I've noticed it's more.
Alda had to review the budget and so I feel like they have a good feel for cost and all that's involved.
Scott, Wayne, we appreciate y'all being here today. Thank you for coming when we meet.